I'll move on, yes. Please, Michael.
Okay.
Go ahead. Close the paper. And pose. Motion, please. I'll move to A, to A through G. Yeah, and there's an H at your... No, an H at the left. All right, screen. Mike and Mike, close the paper.
Hi.
And pose. Motion, please. I'll move three. Three. B, A, C. And with a D and E. And E. And E, correct? Is he here for seconds?
Uh.
Close the paper. And pose. Motion, please. Okay. We have members of the public here this evening. Welcome, folks.
Thank you.
Do you, uh... Does someone want to speak? Cheryl?
Uh, we just came to see if there was something that would be addressed about safety and security in the building. We thought this was the right place to come to.
Yeah, how about Mrs. Steckler, Cheryl? Yes. Turn, go through.
We've been visiting a little bit, but, um, you know, the... The events of the last week, we've certainly had a few days now to kind of reflect on that and breathe and talk about it. We've got a few, um, things that we're doing immediately in terms of conversation. One is, um, we're meeting with the staff on Wednesday afternoon, and I think I shared this. Um, and we're setting up some opportunities for our students to have an opportunity to... While they can't, um, make changes to our policies, we also know that they're feeling some concern and fear and want to give them an opportunity to express that. But there are many, many things that we're looking at. Oh, in addition to that, I'm setting up a parent, uh, committee opportunity for parents who'd like to come and discuss safety, and that's going to be set for Thursday, um, the twenty-ninth of March. And so if anyone's interested in doing that, I'd be happy to take your names and we'll meet together about that. But we're... We're looking at a number of different things. Um, one is particularly pickup and drop-off procedures and, in addition to that, restricting access to our building. You know, we've traditionally been pretty open and buildings unlocked after school or early in the morning for a number of things. So we're looking at all of those. When do we open up? Do we open just one door? How is that monitored? Um, you know, one of the things that we'll be talking about, there's, um, I think, a lot of interest, and rightfully so, in discussing a school resource officer and ways that we might be able to look at managing that and how to refinance that and fund that. Um, one of the things we also spent some time looking at last week was a one en... One-door entry system. Um, as a school, we've got three main doors that are locked that people can be buzzed in. Um, but there is still concern that people can come in with others when they're getting buzzed in or may come in and not go when they're supposed to. But, um, Mike Alad has been looking at spaces for us and how we might be able to manage that. We're a large building and spread out, so it makes it, um, you know, if someone's to come into the... Say, the entrances in the high school, how do they get to another part of the building to get what they need? But there's some logistical things to work out there. Um, another thing we're talking about a little bit is how do we manage public events? You know, there are large group events where people are here together. And how do we look at maybe doing that differently? Or is there a way to do that differently? Um, even our morning activities and adult ed time. So there... This is just a list in the last few days that we've talked out... Talked about, but there are many, many more things that I think we're looking at every element, every, um, practice and procedure that we have. You know, I think people are accustomed to having access, but... But in the climate that we're in and the times have changed from what they were even five years ago. So the safety of our students, the safety of our staff, has to come before convenience and access. So... I don't know if any of you would like to comment or... Or speak?
Oh, I would. Derek, we, uh, graduate from here, and I got two kids here. But I work at South Louis, and we recently hired a resource officer this September, the, uh, grant. And it's a huge change to our school already. I have seen it. I mean, the kids feel they're at ease, they're more relaxed. On my school bus every morning, they're talking about politics, they're talking about different things. It's not arguing or shuddering at each other. It's more positive things in the... In this... Around the whole school. I hear them talking about Mr. Schmidt, and our... We got Eric Schmidt out there. Wonderful person. Great with kids. He started... He had the DARE program years ago. He started that up and then everything, so he's great with the kids. And I can't say enough about it. And it's gonna... It's coming... It's coming time. Every school's gonna have him. It's time everybody is gonna have to just wake up and open their eyes, and you've just gotta do it. Money's no object. Everybody knows, school's got money, you do have money, we got money, you always do. You need a tractor tomorrow, you can get that tractor tomorrow. We know that. I know that. We all know that here. So it's not about that. Safety of our students. It's scary out there nowadays. I talked to Cheryl earlier. I says, "The sad part is, when I come to school events, I'm looking around for what's the quickest way out. If something happens, how can I protect somebody else?" Or what's gotta, you know? That's in the back of our minds nowadays. It's scary to think about that. That's how we gotta go into it nowadays. Because it's gonna be a better time for somebody takes it to the next level. And we don't need that. That's, you know, that can't happen. But it's... I can't stress about the resource officer enough. And he was even at our school on Friday. We were closed. He was there. And he got a bunch of us together, and we all sat down, and we talked about the lockdown we had. He explained the procedures, what should we go on on? And we asked if there's any way other employees can help at the school. If he needs help with something, we're here to help, whatever. And he, you know, he explained the whole things. We watched the, you know, told us about the dogs, what they're looking for, how they work, and all of it. Cause he had it... We had them all there. And it was pretty cool. It was very interesting that he was... He showed up on a snow day. They didn't expect it. Thought it was... It was very nice of him to come in and hang out with us and just catch us up on stuff. And he comes over... He'll come over to my bus garage now and then and just, "Hey, what's going on? How's things going? Any problems on buses? Anything I should be looking at?" He goes, "I'm willing to ride a bus if you want." So that's reassuring right there. And you've had... We all... Some of you've maybe rode buses before, but... Or been around, but that's... That's a tough crowd nowadays, especially when you get a mixture of different kids. But I just wanna stress that... I can't stress enough. It is... It's time. It needs to happen, not yesterday, it needs to happen today. And, you know, if you wanna... This committee, Cheryl, I'll... I'll definitely jump on.
We have you there.
Uh, and stuff like that, absolutely. Um, but it's... It's scary, it is. I mean, I thought, you know... You know, my kids are... I don't want you... They're precious to everybody, all the kids are. You gotta think of it. You all got kids here, well, had kids, whatever. But it's time. I mean, I can't... That last week was pretty stressful for everybody, not just you guys here. It was stressful for everybody, parents, everyone. Um, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm good, I'm just the driver.
Appreciate, uh, appreciate you coming out and saying... Did you get a chance to ask him, Kate?
Also, thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna hear from our administrators tonight. First up is Mr. Ken.
Mr. Ken, how did you guys dress for day as well tonight? He was on campus of U of College today doing interviews. He's having a wonderful time.
Yeah, it's a different perspective when you do... We practice our drills. And our drills are somewhat... There's a lot of questions after coming out of a drill. Teachers always wanna know what is the black and white of how things are gonna go. There is no black and white. Um, was just as... As we practice, uh, if we ever go into a lockdown drill, what it will look like, it'll be administrators or police officers coming to your door and giving you firm directions. And the building I was in, um, there were four officers that came to our door, pounded on the door, identified themselves, and then opened the door. Said who they were, and then they gave us directions on how to get out and, you know, took us to the safe place where that was. And it's real. You know, when you see somebody running by your window with a gun drawn, somebody that's a plainclothes officer, the first guy, it takes you back, and then you see a trail of eight or nine other officers in full gear. It's... It was real. So, yeah, I got a different perspective of what that looks like. And hopefully, when we go through our drills and our training, um, I can add, from my perspective, of what it felt like. But, yeah. But, all in all, last week, Derek, you're absolutely right. It was a very stressful week. Um, and I really threw these notes together in the last hour before they were due. Um, just coming out of break, uh, we're doing some great things. So Rob talked about it athletically. It's probably one of our most successful winter seasons in a while. A lot of kids doing great things. Basketball team's doing very well. Swim team, three-year champion. Um, wrestlers, um, you know, I don't know if you've been to a wrestling match, it wasn't late, but crowds are starting to come back. Basketball, crowds are starting to come back. And so there's a lot of interest, and we'd like to see that. Um, you've probably seen some people run by the window here. They're getting ready for Shrek the Musical. That'll take place Thursday night, and you should have received, um, your tickets in...
We're gonna pick them up from Carla.
Pick them up from Carla. Um, so we've got that going on. Corson Band will have their concert on March fourteenth. Um, believe it or not, we are at the halfway point of the third marking period. Um, Friday was the day grades were due, but we were closed like other neighboring districts during the storm. Um, so those will go out tomorrow. Um, constantly working with kids through our support team, um, getting them academic help, giving them emotional help. Um, that's what we do, you know? And leading up to... To, um... Last week, you know, one of the things that I said to our kids, I met with them at the end of the day, is I'm proud of them because without kids, talking to friends, talking to parents, we would not have known, um, what that discussion was prior to break. It's important. So, proud of them. We're gonna do a little bit more training. Cheryl's talked about, um, our access. We have so many doors, the kids go in and out for convenience. So we've been hitting that on the P.A. system that we really want them using only the high school door. Once we're in session, use the high school door if you're going downtown for lunch. When you come back, use the same door. Don't let your friends in. If they're at the front door of the school or the girls' entry, avoid them. So it's gonna take some training. It's gonna take some training with staff to get Mr. Hansman and myself the information if kids are not following that. So we can... We teach them, and then if we have to, they're breaching our security and we'll have to do other stuff. We're doing it now. Because Derek's absolutely right. We all have kids here or have had kids here, and they're our precious commodity. And we wanna make sure they're safe as well as our staff. Well, I'd like to thanks, and if you have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Claus?
Brian mentioned our midwinter break was... Has been between our last meeting and this meeting, so it took a week of our time. But the good news is people returned healthy from vacations. That vacation came at the right time for us and our staff and our students. Seem to be on the other side of everything, which hoping us and hopefully we continue with that. So it was nice to see everyone rested and re... Ready to return to learn. Uh, a lot of exciting things mentioned. Our fitness February, we had several students participate, and we'll be releasing certificates from physical education teachers. Families participated in that, and we kept their bodies active and a nice family thing to do together. We're all just promoting the entire family being involved in the child's education, so that was a nice thing for families. And from February to March, we transitioned to our Parents' Reading Partners Month. And some great activities, those calendars actually are with children now, and they can read in the different activities in the building. And the staff is doing a great job participating and getting children excited for reading. And a new thing we're reducing with that this year is Read Sess. And Read Sess is a time that we're declaring that everyone's gonna be watching whatever they're doing and the entire building is going to be reading at the same time. So just promoting that with our staff and the students and some of the... Many other things the staff will be doing. Shelfies, which is showing someone with a picture of themselves and a favorite book that they have. So letting children see with the adults, read with them. And certainly encouraging parents to be partners with us for children reading. So the staff is doing a fantastic job with, um, engaging the entire family in their children's education. And along with that, we had our See the Line competition on Saturday. And, um, we had several teams, um, that attended that. And in the elementary school, we did have a first-place team. So we're... They're excited to be moving on to Binghamton, and good for them. And we had a third-place team. We had two primary teams participate, and actually, it was a part of that. And they did a great job. It's amazing what these children can do with the problems that they have and how they perform with that. And we had two other teams that participated in the day's events and did a great job, but they ran a very competitive problem. So nice to see that with, um... Mrs. Bingo coordinates that, and all of the coaches doing a good job. It's a... It's a busy day. Game day's a busy day, it's a long day, but, um, it was fun to see everyone participating in that. So coupled with our academic program, pretty proud to offer those things. And just to mention, last week in the elementary school, um, the professionalism of the teachers was awesome. And this is when you can see it before that the teachers have with their students as well as the parents. Um, we certainly fielded very reasonable phone calls, not a lot, but some. And people... Parents were very reasonable and, um, asked very appropriate questions. And actually, I received, um, more compliments to the teachers from parents that had contacted me, um, just saying, you know, they felt, you know, good that their children were able to continue to function in school, and that was important to them. They just wanted to make sure they were safe. And that's a very, very reasonable question to ask when something like that happens. So staff is outstanding, the students are outstanding, so proud of all of them for that. But absolutely, we continue to make all of that better for sure. Any questions about anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's that?
Um, a couple of my comments were based on school safety too, so I'm gonna touch on those. Um, I guess first, I wanted to thank Brian and Brian and Cheryl for all of their efforts last week, especially the first day ensuring the safety of everyone. Um, there was a lot that went into that, and, um, we appreciate that. Um, many of us, last week, we went to, um, the forum that was held at Maple Ridge. And, uh, wanted to... With the timing of this especially, but wanted to hear from the community, hear their concerns. And a lot of the conversation was on, um... On gun, uh, control, but, um... But it was a great conversation, and it gave us an opportunity to really hear about the concerns in the community and think about how we do things here. Um, anytime you can listen to the community, listen to these folks come in. And, um, I do agree, it's... It's time to really take a look at everything and make sure we've got everything in place that we need. And it's a, um... It's a good opportunity for listening, everyone. Um, and speaking of that, we... We gave that opportunity to our kids in the middle school to have a chat with them. I wanted to make sure that we were giving them factual information, trying to, um, dismiss some of the rumors that were out there. Um, but also give them a chance to ask questions, to talk about, um, things. Their kids, they wanted to talk about it. Um, so we gave them a forum to do that. Um, that... That went over well and hopefully, uh, helped kids feel safe and secure and, uh, what they were still nervous about things. We talked about that too. Um... One of the... A couple of things that we focused on at that meeting with the kids, I guess it was a few pieces. One, to first make sure that they felt safe and secure and that they knew that we cared about them. Uh, two, to let them know that when they're on social media or that... Or when they're in situations with other kids, when they hear something or see something, they need to speak up. They need to talk to their adults. Um, and we went on to say, each student, all of them, need to have an adult that they trust in the building, someone that they can come to with whatever is on their mind, whether it's when they see something or whether they're struggling with something, um, at home or at school, that they've got somebody to talk to about that. So it was good conversation to kinda get all of that out and, uh, educate kids. Um, there's a few nuts and bolts throughout here. One thing I did wanna mention, I had... I was looking at an old calendar, it had March, um, and I have that March fourteenth date for concerts. So make sure you change that. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Claus?
My report's pretty mundane. I've been in meetings. Um, I haven't answered any questions if there was... Because I really... I really can't respond. Do I have anything that I can answer, please? Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions?
I have just one thing to add to my report that just occurred to me, actually. Um, just something to bring to your awareness, and I'm sure we'll be talking more about it in a few minutes in the next... But, um, in the area of English language learners, students who come to us where English is not their first language and maybe not even speak English, we have not, up until recently, really had students who fit that, um, profile. And just this year, we're starting to see an increase in those numbers. And we've anticipated that for several years and have tried to be as prepared as we can, but what we know is that there are not certified teachers regionally to fill those positions. So just for your awareness, it's starting to happen. We knew this was going to come in time, and I wouldn't be surprised if we start to see more and more of that profile of student come to us and we're doing the best we can. We're providing the best and structure we can for them with the folks that we have in place. And just keeping our fingers crossed that we will be able to find, um, teachers certified in that area to... To meet state relations. But in the meantime, having our best folks that we have available to... To work just very specifically with those students and try to just catch them off as quickly as we can. I just wanted you to be aware of that. Okay?
Have we thought about using, um, the internet or video conferencing with schools? Can you add us to, uh, help us with that?
We did, um... We considered that possibility this fall. We have two young children. Um, and felt that just that method for children in first grade and second grade may not be the most effective. It could be for... For older students. Um, we do have some... We're getting some help from Mary's sister, who's a certified teacher in ESL. She's doing some assessments for us, guiding us a little bit. And, um, also talking with current teachers who may be close to that certification, who have enough... They have to have at least twelve credit hours in a foreign language. Um, twelve college hours. So there are programs where they can gain the appropriate added certification, but it would take some commitment on their part to do that. I think that may be our best avenue. Um, I'm not sure there are many certified people out there, and they're in high grade, so...
I'm not suggesting that it would be a beta lock program. I think that we'd be able to do something, especially to talk to the policies. I gotta believe that a couple of the schools in Jefferson County have gotta have those type of teachers for some of their students.
I do.
But the person I have, I mean, you must get this far, was an uncertified teacher doing it as well.
I understand, I'm just wondering if...
Certified, but not... Not a, you know... But, you know, probably working for it, and, um, it was definitely a viable option. It just didn't make sense for us.
First grade, trying to find some small ground.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks.
Just a few items here. First is calendar. When you take a look at the calendar, it's, um, a little scary that it goes through June ninth. It's hard to believe we're... We're that far into the school year. But a couple of things I'd like to highlight. Of course, the musical this weekend, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evening at seven o'clock. Um, for those of you on the finance committee, that's scheduled for Thursday. Those are typically Friday, but that will be Thursday the fifteenth. The sixteenth is career day, um, busy day here at school. And the following Friday is superintendent's conference day, and I'll talk about that, our plans for that in just a minute. And then on the twenty-eighth, it's a Wednesday evening, is, um, the Jeff Lewis School Board's National Honor Society Recognition Night. Um, and that's at Watertown High School. And so you are all invited to that as well. There may be some information in that red folder that's going around. So, um, you know, beyond that, we get into April, and we'll talk more about those at our next meeting. But those are the... The four things that I wanted to... To just highlight for tonight.
Well, let's also highlight the vote on Wednesday.
The vote on Wednesday for the Voces Capital Project. And the location for that in our county is at the ACES Building, the Vokes Center, and also out at Glenfield.
Hoping that we would all get out and vote and either pass that project. That twenty million dollar project will do a lot of good, especially buying the set property, St. Peters, and renovating the sets, and our students will benefit greatly.
What are the hours to vote?
Twelve... Twelve to eight. And obviously, there aren't gonna be a lot of people. There's eighteen districts that can vote. I don't think a lot of people will be traveling from Little Forge to Webb or even from Greenville. And we're fortunate to have two so close to Waterloo. So I'm hoping that we might get out. Also hope that the administration might just mention it to the staff, so maybe on their way home, they could vote.
You can do that.
And, uh, let's see. As I understand, we have seventy-five absentee ballots from an area from Alex Bay to Purcell. Ralph, we could really use that support. Okay? First time we've had a vote like this. First time we've had a vote in fifty years.
It's the first time there's been any major, significant improvements to every one of the tech centers in many, many years, so...
Alwex invited to vote as well, at that point.
What changes, uh... Are they looking out... Out here?
Almost all of it is just...
It's VAC?
VAC, new doors, new windows.
I think there's security in all of it.
Security. I mean, obviously, that's a very difficult situation for us at both centers. Especially in Watertown. But it also includes a great deal of renovation at St. Peters. And those, uh... People made fun of me today about the fact that I was here when Ken Paulson built the... Except for after, I also was at St. Peters when it opened, and those windows were there when I was there. I won't tell you when that was. But, uh, that's all gotta be upgraded. It will be spending millions of dollars in that facility. So we could use the support that we can. Get off my soapbox.
Thank you, Brian. Um, we have an in-service date. We approved it our last boardroom from March twenty-third to Friday. Originally, when that date was set, our focus was going to be primarily on our new Atlas curriculum, the online curriculum system. Um, but that's shifted a bit. I... I wanna spend some time talking in the morning a little bit on budget so that our staff all have a sense of where we are there moving forward. But then we're going to spend, um, most of the rest of the day on security, safety. Um, and part of the reason for that is that people can't teach when they're concerned about your safety. So... So it's... It's meeting the needs of our staff. And really, our... Our planning, um, all of that input is going to be very, very important. So that's going to be the primary focus of our day back there on the twenty-fourth. And, um, I'll have the agenda ready for you on the nineteenth when we begin. And just an update on the one hundred thousand dollar project. That's the LED lighting that's being installed in the... In the middle school. There's one room left to do. Um, the rest of that's all been completed, and I think it's Thursday that they're scheduled to come back to do that one, because it's just the one room. So they will finish that this Thursday, and then that project will be completed for this year. And we're already seeing some... Some benefits of the lighting that was put in the... In the original capital project in terms of cost savings. So that will be, uh, could be very important for us. And our staff really like the dimming switches on it too. They can really control the level of the... The light in their classrooms. So that will be for the show.
I think one of the... When we talk about security, we obviously talk about the entrances. Thing I was thinking about is, uh... Someone wanted to get in our building, and the door's locked. We have a great number of windows near all of those doors. I do not believe those windows are door-proof. And one thing I am... One thing the administration might wanna look at in short periods is seeing about replacing that glass so that people can't... They can't break down the door, blow the windows out. blow the windows out. Because it is the one weakness I think we have. We can lock the door, but if you wanna get in, so I'm just wondering if that's something I wanna look at, with the doors and those windows, the windows in those doors and the glass near them. I'm thinking about the one down there. I just wonder if that's something that's... I'm not sure how much it would cost, but... Just the glass.
Didn't we talk once about the coating that they sell?
Look at that for the elementary.
That's so it's not shatterproof, and it can't be knocked out, and retains itself.
It's on. Anything that would slow someone out.
If the windows were married, you couldn't see in. People don't like to shoot at stuff, they can't see.
No, I don't think we can do that.
I'm not sure what the regulation would be in that, but, you know, there are many, many different things
that we want to look at, so...
And cameras would be a big thing. If people are stalking around the building at night or in the morning, or...
We do have a camera system. And we're actually looking at an upgrade right now, and we're waiting for approval through SED that that's been submitted to facilities planning at state ed, because our camera system was installed in the 2000 project. And that doesn't sound that long ago, but 10 years ago, technology changes a lot. So that was submitted to them through the Smart Schools money that you may have heard about, that we approved in November, you know. So the money will come to us from the state, it's designated for us. We just have to get approval for the cameras, so... Any questions?